Good evening.
Good evening.
That's the best we can do. Good evening.
Good evening.
There we go. That's better. Thanks. I'd like to call the regular monthly Board of Fire Commissioners, meeting Benita Springs, Monday, October 11th, 2021, to order. Please rise.
I'd like to have a moment of silence in remembrance and honor of 21 fallen firefighters this past month, which is an enormously high number. So let's observe a moment of silence for them and followed by a prayer. God, we come to you and we honor those that gave their lives for the service of others across this nation this past month. I pray, Lord, you'll be with the families of these firefighters, that you also give them comfort and strength. And, Lord, as always, we ask for protection for the firefighters here in Benita and the area, that you'll watch over them, always guard them and protect them from harm, and watch over their families. We thank you for the ability to gather and the freedom we have. I pray you'll grant wisdom to those who lead and that the things that are done, the decided, will always be done for what is best for everyone. It's in Christ's name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any public comment on agenda items? I don't have any cards, but anybody have anything they want to talk about on the agenda, seeing none? Need a motion to approve September 7th, 2021 budget workshop minutes?
So moved. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. September 13th, 2021 tentative milage and tentative budget hearing minutes? I need a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Need a motion for September 13th, 2021 regular meeting minutes?
So moved. Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the September 22nd final milage and final budget hearing minutes? Need a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item, this is going to be one motion, September 2021 incurred expenditures and ACH payments, acknowledgement of financial report, acknowledgement of wire transfers and transfers between accounts. Budgeted POs over $10,000, CRS technology and Zoll Medical.
All in motion. I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioners' business. I'm not going to call on everybody individually. Has anybody got something?
Just real brief, recently I got to see the men and women of our department in action. I just happened to roll by a really severe accident. I think it was on Imperial. It was a rollover. Someone was a trauma alert. Our guys were out there. And it was really nice. I saw the chief out there working. I even called him and said, I really, it just makes you proud to be part of this organization. People really get their money's worth in the city of Benita when you guys are in action, and we appreciate your hard work. I know Lee County SO was there. There was, I think Castero was there. It was a big, it was a big deal. It was a rollover, and you guys did a great job. So, thank you.
Thank you. That's at a regular basis. Not just that one accident. It's every day. It's like, you know, we get the, we get all the calls and there's some, as we well know. Anybody else have anything they'd like to say?
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody here for their outpouring of concern about my wife's passing, and thank you.
Anything you need from anybody here, you know, all you have to do is ask.
Yep.
Anybody else? Welcome back. I mean, nice to see you.
Smart.
Come back from Jersey.
Thank you.
All right, now presentations. Chief?
Yeah, thank you, sir. We have some presentations, years of service presentations. Firefighter Whitlock is off right now, so we'll skip his, but he has completed 15 years of service, so very valuable personnel to our, to our team. Next on my list is firefighter Wayne Day. As in past, when I talk about these, these, the crews, the men and women that work for us, I like to, like, look at their personnel file, see what they've got, kind of let the board know what, what kind of background they have. In this case, you know, Wayne Day is a paramedic. He's a fire service instructor, has his fire officer one. And again, I pulled from his personnel file his last evaluation, what his officer thinks about him. Because Wayne Day is a firefighter with us. So some of the things in his was possesses a knowledge to handle work of the most complex nature, displays pride in his work, contributes to the success of this district, compassionate towards the public at all costs, skillful in training employees, and very dependable, and he's a seasoned professional. That's the kind of person that we employ here. That's the kind of person Wayne Day is. Wayne Day was one of our acting lieutenants. We're hoping this year, when he comes back around, he's studying for the test and becomes an acting lieutenant for us again. And I'd like to mention also, he just recently became a grandfather. So, congratulations, Wayne.
Here, here.
Next on our list is firefighter Mark Simon, also a paramedic, fire officer one, instructor, hazmat tech. Again, from his personnel file, pull that up. Exceeds expectations in job knowledge, trusted to complete any task given him, productivity is always above standard, great relationship with the public and his peers, completes all duties without supervision, very dependable. Also, another thing about Mark Simon, he's on the USAR team. He's been on the USAR teams since he's been here, since the inception of the USAR team. For those of you who don't know it, the Urban Search and Rescue Team was started here many, many years ago. At the time, it was all voluntary. All the training we did was voluntary, never any expectation of being paid, any of that. So Mark's been on the team ever since we started it. Been on deployments, and of recent, he was with myself and five others on the deployment surface side. Did a fine job over there. Eight days of hard grueling work, never one complaint out of Mark. So I'd just like to congratulate Mark for 20 years of service. And again, he'll be taking the acting lieutenant test, we hope, this, this February. Another 20-year veteran is Lieutenant Lamb. I think he's at his station or on a call right now. But again, here's Lieutenant Lamb, one of our valued employees, 20 years. We stole him from the beach, so. Next on our list, on my list, is the other two. I'll go with the first one, Jason Brode. Jason Brode, 20-year employee, bachelor degree, paramedic, hazmat tech, instructor three, fire officer one. You know, couple, about a year ago, right at a year ago, a little over a year ago, Jason stepped up to the plate. We had a vacancy in the deputy chief's position. We'd been talking to him years and years as a, as a battalion chief, and so we asked him, when we had the vacancy, would he be interested in becoming a deputy chief? I'll be honest, Jason and I go way back, ever since he's, when he worked for EMS, he was, we stole him from EMS. Jason's been a, I'll say jokester kind of guy, likes to play tricks on people and, you know, act like he falls and stuff like that. And I'll be honest, I had a little, I had a little concern of him stepping into the executive officer role as an executive officer here as a deputy chief, and he's surprised me quite a bit. He's done an excellent job in the position of deputy chief of special ops and fire. Little to no supervision is needed for him whatsoever. Again, he's one of the team, the four of us up here, all of us up here, when we have a decision to make, we all sit around and talk about it, and Jason brings a lot to the table when we sit and make these decisions. So, congratulations to, 20 years to Jason.
Go around the other way this time, soon get hurt.
Next on the list is Deputy Chief Madden. Again, Deputy Chief Madden comes to us with master's degree, FO1, instructor three, paramedic. And actually, he came from Calhoun County EMS, so a little backstory on both of them. Him and Jason were both hired at the same time, obviously 20 years, but hired on the same day. Neither one of them had fire certification. We both, we sent them both to fire school. So, you know, Eric went to the route of when we needed somebody in training, Eric stepped up to the plate and was one of our training officers, you know, had Paul Phillips to kind of help him out and train him and show him the ropes when we had that vacancy. Then, you know, we had the vacancy in the fire side of it. When Deputy Chief Giuliano left, Eric stepped up to the plate and Caesar left, stepped up to the plate and became a deputy chief of fire, of fire and special ops. And then when Chief Daigle decided to retire and I took the position and I promoted Chief Scott into his, we had a vacancy in EMS. You know, Eric's first love has been EMS. He was a paramedic before he was a firefighter. Like I said, we stole him from Calhoun County EMS. So he asked, hey, can I go over and do that? Can I go over and be EMS? It's where my first love is. Can I go do it? Again, had a little reservations about it because, you know, it's something new to him. He was doing good in fire, so why would you ever want to do EMS if you can only play on the fire side of it? So I didn't understand it. But we gave him a chance, and he's done a real fine job at it. He's taken the RFID program that Chief Scott implemented. He's, he's learning it very well. It's a hard learn. I mean, it takes a while, but he's doing a real good job of it, and he's taken the bull by the horns and made some changes and implemented stuff. So he's doing a real fine job for us, and I'd like to congratulate him on 20 years also. And the other two that weren't here, we'll make sure they get their pins, but thank you.
We're going to move right into, excuse me, we're going to move right into the Phoenix Award, as always.
I'll turn it over to Deputy Chief Madden.
Always our favorite.
Always. It's the best day in the world.
Yeah.
Good evening. Thank you. Appreciate that, chief. Thank you. Thank you. We give out the Phoenix Award to first responders who successfully revived someone who was in cardiac arrest. And it gets really special when that person can join us during these presentations. Mr. Verbecky, on May 23rd, he actually gave me permission to speak about this a little bit. On May 23rd, Mr. Verbecky went to sit down in his chair, and he was relaxing, watching TV, and his wife noticed that he was slumped over and he wasn't, he wasn't responding. She pulled Mr. Verbecky out of her, out of, excuse me, I'm going to get emotional looking at you. Don't look at me. So Mrs. Verbecky pulled Mr. Verbecky out of his chair, began CPR, and called 911. And that's when, from Lee County Sheriff's Office, Officer Caleb Ray was the first one on scene, and he took over CPR. And that early CPR significantly increased your chance of survival. Absolutely, absolutely. Our crews in Lee County EMS showed up not long after, and they began their advanced life support treatment, and they were able to get his heart rhythm back, and they stabilized him, and they got him to the hospital. And 20 days later, he walked out, and he's sitting here with us tonight, so. I'm going to bring you guys up one at a time, if you would please just stay up here after. Lieutenant Ernest Williams. This is Lieutenant Williams' fifth Phoenix Award. Firefighter Marcos Eras. Firefighter Ryan Francis. This is firefighter Francis's second award. Firefighter Christian Mayfield. This is firefighter Mayfield's first award. Acting Lieutenant Dan Platus. This is Acting Lieutenant Platus's third award, from Lee County Sheriff's Office, Deputy Caleb Ray. And from Lee County EMS, paramedic stand ball. Thank you again.
At this time, we'll take a short break for anybody that has to go back to work or would like to leave, not stay for the rest of the meeting. When they said I'd take a recess, I didn't plan on the commissioners leaving. Never know.
My hands not good enough for you?
I thought it was something we said. Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order. I need a motion for the disposals, for the radios and computer.
So moved. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chief, I'm going to have you explain. We've got a couple of fire trucks that are old that we need to do something with, and we're going to bounce a few ideas around here tonight to see which way we think we're going to go.
So, so as you guys know, we've replaced engine 24 and truck 25. We're keeping truck 25 as a reserve and it become truck 29. And then we also have, we're keeping the old engine 24, and we're going to use that as the school reserve. So that left us with an O1 Quantum, that was, was our old engine 29, the one that we replaced engine 22 with way back when. And then we also have the school truck that we used to use, which is a 2001 Contender. So I've solicited a few things, a few used, used car dealerships, used truck dealerships. They gave me a price list of what we think we can get to, get from them. You know, what they've shown as comparable, comparable other pieces out there, for sale, not sold, they're for sale right now, is right around $19,000 and $27,000 respectively. So what, what I'm thinking of right now is next month, bring to you guys to put them on a disposal list, but between now and then, we have gotten emails, we've gotten requests for smaller departments, maybe in the Panhandle, the Calhoun County, Washington County, volunteer fire departments that are running around on 1985 trucks, 1987 trucks. These may be an upgrade to them. So what I will do between now and then, our next month, is solicit it, solicit to see if these trucks are, are worth anything to those, to those volunteer fire departments. So I would, I would entertain a motion next month, either to, A, we're going to either donate them to a fire, to a, a smaller department that may have some use for, or we'll go on the open market and see what we can get.
I was amazed to hear that there's some special districts up in the Panhandle that your total budget is $100,000 a year, and everything else is volunteer. From where I sit, and I'm sure we all share the same, I mean, it's going to benefit taxpayers of Florida for the little bit, and that's asking prices, and who knows if they're going to sell.
Yeah.
And from where I sit, if, if we can, if we can donate to, and keep them in service somewhere.
No problem.
For the little bit of money that we're going to get out of it, I, I just, the goodwill, I think is, is worth way more than a little bit of money.
And I've talked to our mechanic, Keith Van Gelder, and Bruce Sheffield, and Timbo Gas. You know, those three come to the consensus, you know, if we got $30,000 for both of them, that would be a lot of money. You know, the O1 Contender that we've had that was a school truck, you know, the AC's been out of it for, you know, two or three years because it went from the bay to the tower, from the tower to the bay. We weren't using it. It wasn't a first light truck, so we didn't see the necessity to fix the AC because it wasn't being used. So, you know, when it says 19 asking price, if we would get 10 out of it, I would think that would be lucky.
You could part them out and get more than that.
Well, and that's it. And if we can, if we can help another smaller department with something a little bit better for them, I think, I think it'd be goodwill.
Definitely, that'd be the first move.
I like the idea of doing that. If we got a consensus for that, then that's the only thing.
Next year.
If we have that consensus, then don't even bother with another.
Whoever can use it.
Figure out where they're going to go and for next month's meeting.
Okay.
I'm fairly sure that, that's the direction we'll go, rather than spend time looking
at other options.
The, the need is there. Know what the need.
Okay. Any old business?
Larry, good, I was just going to ask the same thing. How do you determine the need? You know, do you know these people up there?
What, what I'll do is, what my plan would be, is between now and then, I, as you know, I'm part of the Florida Fire Chiefs Association. I'll talk to the representative in the Panhandle and see if there is a need. If there is more than one need, I will bring it back to you guys, and we'll just choose, like, again, if there's two or three needs, we'll separate them. One go to this, this, this district, the other one go to that district.
Have them come and just take us out to dinner. The one that's giving us the best dinner, we'll give them the. It'd be a bad lunch.
And if you get a, you know, hopefully you don't get a lot of need, hopefully that we're in better shape than that. But I know there are some volunteer departments up in the Panhandle that, I don't know how they do it.
I think this week, this week or next week, they're having the, the great volunteer training, training up in that, in the Panhandle area. So I'll, I'll reach out to them tomorrow morning. Chief up there, Ryan Crawford, so I'll find out.
And if we do get more than two, then.
We'll figure it out.
We have to do some kind of lottery, and, you know, that's all. It's the only fair way we can do it, rather than.
Commissioner Cacilla has a, has an avalanche we can just give to them as a staff vehicle.
Chairman, may I ask the chief a question?
Sure.
While we're on the subject of trucks, are we having any trouble getting tires for our vehicles?
We have heard the shortage. If you recall, last month, there was a set of tires on there. Those are what we're going to put in spare in rotation. So if somebody, well, we got told, what was it, Jason, eight to 10 weeks to get a set of tires. So we have a set of tires in storage right now, so if we need a set, one blows, like we had two weeks ago, truck 25 was out on the, truck 21, I'm sorry, was out on the interstate, something punctured a tire, it came back with a flat tire. We had one in spare, rotated it out, and now we've got, we've got one on order. It's going to take about eight to 10 weeks to get here. But we have spares on rotation.
I'm just throwing this out there for the board, and the, and the chief is, I watched the whole thing on the news the other day, the BBC. There's one country that provides all the rubber for our tires. It's Thailand. They're all clones, so when one's susceptible to a disease, they all get it. And they're all diseased right now. And my parents needed tires. The Tire Kingdom, long story short, we're on the fourth choice because all the ones that we pick, they're, they don't have, and they don't know when they're getting in. It has nothing to do with transportation. They just don't have the rubber right now. So do we need to order some so we have them?
We, we're on a good rotation right now. We got some on order. Again, like you said, we normally by Goodyear, we may have to go to Michelin's. We, if Michelin's not available, we may have to go to BF Goodrich. What, so we've got a plan in place right now. Right now, I think we're good. A lot, most of our fleet have newer tires. It's just those unexpected, hey, if we hit something, we run over something.
Which brings up the next point. When we order the next truck, are they having supply issues for?
As of right now, Chief Brode and myself met with our sales rep three weeks ago, roughly three weeks ago. We asked them, right now, they're still at 10 months for an engine. So we're still doing.
I would think that time would be of the essence to get that order in because that's not, that's going to get worse before it gets better.
We're, we're, we're going to, I won't say hold off, but we're finding out exactly when the next price increase is, since it's going to be roughly the same truck as we've ordered the last two or three times. That's why he says it's a 10-month.
It'll be a bigger jump this time than it's been in years past, too, I guess.
Well, that's why, that's why we're going to wait till, let us make a little bit of money on it, and then them making the money on it. So, on saving it. So that's the plan right now. Along those same lines, if I may, after that meeting, we decided to call who we get our staff vehicles from. Because as you know, in the budget we have for a new rescue truck. So we had met with 10-8, and they're going to start building rescue trucks. But they said we could, they, we could get the chassis cheaper than they could. So they said, buy the chassis, then we'll put the box on it, we'll build around it, blah, blah, blah. We've caught, when we left, meeting with them.
Lucky getting a chassis, right?
Well, that's what he said. I called our, our salesman up and said, hey, can I get a chassis? You, normally takes 10 to 12 weeks. He goes, you'd be lucky to get it in 10 months.
Wow.
And he goes, they've canceled the 21 orders and not accepting any 22 orders right now.
Is that true? What, what company is it?
Uh, actually, I said, I don't care what it is, I'll even buy a Dodge.
You were desperate.
Yeah, I was desperate. So, so it was all of them. It's out of, it's out of Jacksonville's, it's Garber Auto Mall, or Auto whatever. They sell all three brands.
Just, just from a, you know, I mean, I've got a.
Through state bid.
I've got a coach, and, you know, I mean, I've done a lot of work with Freightliner. Do they make something small enough that you could check with Freightliner?
Freightliner is the smallest that we would get from a Freightliner or International Harvester would be like our brush trucks. FPNL truck, brush truck, something like that.
All right. Well, seeing there's no more old business, correct? We'll move on to new business. Chief?
So, under new business, we have a discussion, a general pension of COLA to 1.65. So what I bring to you, as you guys know, the pension, both pension boards meet quarterly. I believe it was back in February, they started kind of this ball rolling that they were looking at changing the COLA. So just to give you a little backstory, the past budget year, which is the. So just to give you a little backstory, the past budget year, which is the 21, 2021 budget year, the general pension plan's cost, district's contribution was 23.3%. Because of investments, because of, I don't want, which is a good thing, lack of use, we don't have a lot of people drawing on the pension plan, the cost this year was, is projected to go down to 19.6%. So with that, the pension board went to Foster &amp; Foster and asked if, what could they do to enhance their pension? Right now, their cost of living increase is 1.35. Through a actuary study, they looked at it, and to keep it around the 23.3, which is what it was previous year, to keep it to at 21.6, so it still lessens it almost 2% from what they were paying, but it raises it up about 1% of what it's projected to be this year. That would give them a COLA of 1.65, a cost of living increase to 1.65. So that's what they're asking.
No, that's in their contract, in that contract.
That's in the contract.
And the contract expires next year.
September 30th. Just as a background, if I may, I did some research through the Department of Retirement. There are 158 total general plans reporting to the state of Florida. Forty-one of those are equal to or greater than what we pay, as in, the membership here pays 7%. So 41 of those 158 paid 7% or more, the rest of them are less. The high or the low is 0%, some of them don't pay anything towards their retirement. And then the high is 19.7. And just so we're apples to apples, FRS is 3%, they're paid 3% into FRS. And so...
We have faced this issue before, in the middle of a contract, or before the contract was up. And I think that time we settled it by waiting till the contract was up, and then approving that, but making it retroactive so that it didn't cost anything, but it also wasn't setting a precedent of changing a contract midstream.
And you're saying it expired 11 days ago, or September of next year?
September of next year. Is when all, right now, our general employees' contract, our suppression contract, and our supervisory contract are all set to expire September 30th of '22. I'd just be remiss to say that, yes, the contract expires then, but the general pension plan covers both, just like the suppression or the firefighter pension plan covers the executive staff here. It also covers non-bargaining unit members also, that's all.
I think a question that I'm gonna ask is, if that happened when we do the new contract, okay, will it affect anybody that's under that contract now, before we do it at a new contract negotiation? In other words, is somebody gonna be penalized because of that, or will it not matter?
Right now, I don't think we have anybody currently set to retire in this or next budget year.
So, from where I sit... And if I would, this, what they're asking for as a proposal, would go for retirees and people who have already retired and future retirees. So it's going prospectively and respectively.
And is that normal, that it would go for, after somebody's not part of the...
It did, when we did the death benefit and the COLA, for someone who passes away, we did it for both of those. So that is somewhat of a norm.
Well, anyway, I don't know how everybody else feels, but my feeling on that is that rather than set a precedent of midstream changing something, we wait till the end of the contract and discuss it then.
Yeah, I agree totally.
Okay. I'll bring it up during negotiations, and then we'll put it in next year's budget.
Just for clarification, so if we don't do anything now, it's not gonna hurt anybody?
Correct. And it's all gonna be, it'll most likely, I can't say that for sure, but most likely it'll be retroactive.
It is, like I said, it would, yes, it would be dependent on the resolution, but the resolution, what they would be proposing today, is that it would be retroactive.
As long as, you know, as long as it's not hurting somebody drastically, and even then, you know, I have a real problem changing contracts, that's what contracts are for.
When you say, you know, let's put it out there, let's use the eight to 10 people on the general employee pension right now, safe number, say 10, what it would be is those 10 would not get the COLA increase this year, it would be next year. So that's all.
But it's like, it's not a huge amount of money, you know, it's like, so, again, it's not even the money from where I sit, it's setting the precedent of changing something that's written in a contract and negotiated. So I think as long as we're all in agreement, you know, we don't need a motion for that, but it...
No, it's just a discussion.
I think if we're all in agreement, that, you know, we'll discuss that when the negotiations start, and it's just an item to negotiate and figure out from there.
Okay.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes, and again, I'm really sorry, I'm not, just for the point of clarification, does, do they want us to change that now? Is that why you're bringing it to us, or they're just bringing it for discussion so we can start talking about it?
Both, they've done the actuary study, they would like it changed now. That's what they was bringing up for discussion.
Okay.
Okay. Chief, you gotta do your report.
Yes, switching gears. So just to get...
Wait a minute, policies and procedures?
Oh, discussion of policies and procedures after.
Oh, my bad, I thought that was all part of that.
No, policies, as you guys have gotten your emails of late, we are in the process, we have been in the process for the last year, eight months, of updating our policies and procedures. Last time they were updated was 2014. We felt, I felt that they needed to be updated, staff felt they needed to be updated to reflect what we're doing today. You know, the CBA changes every three years, the collective bargaining agreement changes every three years. So we took a hard look at it, so we are in the process of changing them. You guys should have gotten, or will start to get emails of those policies and procedures. I think... Sent a bunch a couple of weeks, so we also sent you the original as a whole document. So that way, you have what it was to what it is. A lot of it is a little bit of format change, no really, meat and potatoes have changed on it. We're not changing crazy stuff, it's just updating it and doing what, reflecting what we're actually doing. So then after you, after the five of you have looked at it, if you have questions, we can meet one-on-one. At that point, we'll send it off to Louis Longley and Walker, have Terry Lewis or his staff look at it. That would update anything statutory.
What's the timeframe on that, before it'll be wrapped up?
Hopefully by the end of this year, just our fiscal year.
So we got time yet?
Yeah. So that's it, if you've got any questions or concerns about what changed, if you can't find out what changed, sometimes none of it changed, maybe just a word here or a word there.
Is that something we would do a workshop over?
We could, if there's enough interest in it.
I think, yeah, that might be a good idea, put it up on the screen, go over it, line by line with all of us here, and then we'll have a better, a better understanding than reading 70 pages of Googly, and not being able to talk to each other about, are we okay with that? So maybe a workshop?
All right, we'll pack a lunch and do a workshop.
There you go.
Because as we know, it's over 300 pages.
Well, you know, just especially, you're not changing all 300 pages, you're only changing certain items on those pages.
We'll make...
So obviously, I think highlighting the changes and the updates, and I think that would, we could definitely condense that pretty quickly.
Yeah, I mean, we've changed the whole format, so it's gonna look different, so, but we'll create a workshop.
You like to wreck things, don't you? It was just fine the way it was, I didn't wanna change it all.
I gotta put my finger on it, make it mine.
Gotta step on it somewhere.
Have you done the math on the COLA to see what the increase is gonna be per fiscal year?
The difference is about...
Twenty-some thousand?
$22,789.
Okay, thank you.
And 43 cents. Roughly. So, yeah, we'll get a workshop together, we'll go back, because I've looked at most of them, Chief Scott's looked at most of them. We'll do an annotated version to where it says, on this, this policy, this is what's changed on it. Give a little brief synopsis.
Yeah, if you could just do a presentation with the highlights of, you know, what's really going, I don't... If you say they're not that significant, then it should be a fast meeting, but sometimes those not-so-significant things become more significant when we don't know about them.
Gotcha. We'll make that happen.
Thanks. You wanna do your report now?
No, I'm done, no. I just wanna give you guys a few brief dates and some things going on in the district. Wednesday, this Wednesday, two days from now, firefighter of the year with the VFW is having a presentation from 11:30 to 12:30 roughly, over here on K-9 Drive behind the Dollar Tree.
Is it a date, or are we combining that with the Sheriff's Office?
I don't think so. I think they get their own, we get our own.
What was the date? I'm sorry to hear.
Whatever this Thursday is, 13th. Or this Wednesday, I'm sorry, Wednesday, Wednesday 13th, 11:30 to 12:30. From what I understand, they're the nominees, and I believe it's all won, anybody who went to Surfside is being nominated, and I think they're honoring all of those that went to Surfside. Also, on Thursday, is Business After Hours over at Riptide, which is where the old Momentum Brewery used to be. That's from four to six, so if you wanna go.
Where's that? On Beach Road?
Uh, no, they moved from Beach Road, they're over there.
No, I know that, you said with the old where it used to be.
Well, Riptide took over Momentum, Momentum sold to Riptide.
Oh, okay.
So it's now Riptide.
They're up by Hundreds Ridge.
Correct. So that's four to six, if anybody'd like to go, please get ahold of Anna Marie tomorrow, if possible. Just to keep it on your radar, for those members who do usually go to the Chamber of Commerce Golf fundraiser, it's November 5th, again, let Anna Marie know if, who's gonna do that. For Chairman Lohan, just a brief reminder, we've already talked about it, but I wrote it down, so I'm gonna say it anyways, October 28th and 29th at Sandestin up in the Panhandle for FASD. Also, FASD, if you put it on your calendars, January 26th is the legislative days in Tallahassee. I believe that's a Wednesday, normally it is a Wednesday, so that's when we usually go up and talk to our legislators.
Would we go up Tuesday or Wednesday?
We'd go up Tuesday.
Yeah.
Again, with the new president, Jim Milliken, at FASD, a lot will be told with this one that Commissioner, or Chairman Lohan's going to, what his goal and what his vision has been, or is now, is to make these quarterly meetings more of a education, a two-day event. So right now, I know legislative days is slated for January 26th. That's not to say that they may have class on the 25th, so our travel day may be the 24th. I don't know that yet, I just gotta save the date for legislative days as of the 26th. So I don't know if they're gonna do education like they did, or are doing on this one. Just another FYI, we are starting interviews for the three hires, starting them the 20th and 21st of this month, for a hope, start on shift by no later than January. Some good news currently right now, knock on wood, we have nobody out with COVID-19. So the Delta variant, though it ran through us pretty fast and pretty furious, it's done. Not done, at least we don't have anything right now at the fire department. Also, this Saturday, there's EVT testing here. In case you didn't know, twice a year, we host the emergency vehicle technician testing site here, and it's a written test that they have, and we have our, a couple of our guys go through it every once in a while when they're due for tests, but that's this Saturday. And lastly, just an FYI, on Thursday, myself and Chairman Lohan went up and met with Senator Ray Rodriguez about some issues going on with the COPCN. North Carriers trying to revamp the non-transport COPCN. We've had calls in to Spencer Roach, Representative Roach, who said he may be on board with helping us out on it. So Chairman and myself went up to meet with Senator Rodriguez. You know, not to ask him to sponsor it, because he kindly said that he would not be sponsoring any bills this year for himself, because he is in charge of redrawing the district lines, so he's gonna have a target on his back, so he doesn't want anything to do with pushing bills through. And that way, if he's pushing a bill, oh, you redrew the line for them because you're pushing their bill, so he wants nothing to do with it, which we respect him for letting us know that upfront. But we had a great conversation, was up there with him half an hour, 45 minutes. So then I also met with Representative Mello out of the Carriery County area on the same issues. So just keeping you guys up to date with what's going on. Probably next month, I'll have another update and some other issues with legislative stuff. And that's the end of my report, if you have any questions.
Anybody else wanna speak? We have your reports, nice work. You're up, Alex. Oh, he's not here.
He was ready for that. Could you stand in for him, please? Jim Kaufman said he can stand in for him.
Motion to adjourn.
We're outta here, thanks for coming.